Get started, Madam Clerk, color roll.
Councillor Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
French Coast.
Before we get started, I know we have a guest here who was here last week that asked about Land Bank property, George Karyatnik is here. I see Sam Lamencusa is here as well, so hopefully we can, anything you need answered, we can get through today. George, did you have a specific question for Treasurer Lamencusa?
Well, no, actually, I was hoping the Land Bank would be here, but I kind of figured they were gonna not show up.
Well, he's the chairman.
We went through that last meeting and he cut me off, let me speak on, and he wouldn't give me an explanation on why and how it worked, how it went. And last week, I told you guys I had second answers from commissioners, but I was hoping to get some answers today. You guys did look into it. I know you guys are on the Land Bank board, and I just can't think, I don't want to believe you guys are part of it.
Well, I talked to Mr. Martin, so go over your question, let's see if Sam can answer it first, and then I'll clue you in on what I learned over the last week. I want to get the cart before the horse.
It's just same thing, you know, property being looked over by individuals, being looked over for no reason. And then, my main concern was when I sent my information in, you go to buy a house, you don't email your financials to an email or a text or a, and I asked them, I said, "Let me bring it in, I got a lot of money in my bank, I don't want it floating downstairs or being seen," you know, absolutely not. So, I started, I was opening my bank account with just enough money in there to know that I had what I wanted to do. And I'm glad I did that, because now, as I said last time, I find out that the Land Bank gave all the information to the buyer of the property. He went to Weatherfield with my plan, my idea. It wasn't his, two employees at the Land Bank, and I hate to do it, but they're afraid they're gonna get fired, but when it comes to, when it comes to it, they're gonna, they got him on recording. I just can't believe that this is how it works.
Sam, do you have any, anything to add to that?
I can talk about Land Banks till tomorrow morning, if you want me to.
Just one property, 1581 North State Street.
I believe you know that. We will not address a property in a public forum. You were told that at our Land Bank meeting. Trumbull Neighborhood Partnerships has contractual agreement with the Land Bank program, they represent the Land Bank. They have procedures and policies in place to address complaints or an issue on a property. Mr. Martin, at that meeting, told you he would set up, you needed to contact him, would be more than glad to have an appointment with you, review your entire purchase, and show you why you did not receive the property. You did not seem to like that, you're happier carrying on in front of a camera and making statements of non-truth.
Let me ask you, did you not go to court pay back taxes? I got this information, if you said it was false. I mean, if that's what part of it was, you didn't want me bringing up the back taxes that the Land Bank had to pay. But I don't care about that. I want one property, I want one property, 1581 North State Street. Why was I overlooked? Why did the Land Bank give my information to a buyer that used my information, my plan, my business plan, to get that property?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know, who's the chair of this, Mr. Chairman, I will address the board. I don't wish to address an individual. You can see when he's addressed, he answers differently, and constantly twists, and constantly makes false statements. I refuse to answer a member. This is your meeting, I'll answer the board. I was invited to this meeting along with Mr. Martin and Miss King. I will explain why they are not here, and address the board, and go back downstairs and continue to be county treasurer. There is no reason for this to occur here. This man was given the opportunity at our board meeting and told how to address the problem. You stated you spoke with Mr. Martin after I'm done. If you wish to add, or contradict, or say something different, though what I say, I'm more than glad to hear that. Mr. Martin and Miss King are not here today because of me. I told them they are not to attend. Once again, they are employees of Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership, who has a contractual agreement with the Land Bank Utilization Corporation to oversee the Land Bank program. They have procedures in place, once again, to answer problems of this nature, things that take place with the Land Bank. The gentleman was told that at our meeting and refused to set up an appointment. He was told by me, at that meeting, on two different occasions, to address the board, to address the chair, not to address members of the board. He continued calling one of the board members by name, make statements to them. The board members at that time choose to adjourn the meeting. He has stated here that we adjourned the meeting and walked out of it. That is true, because he was causing complaint and harassment to the board. He questioned who I was, and I informed him I was the president of the board of Trumbull County Treasurer. After several attempts to tell him, it was time, his time was up, and the meeting was, he was to set a meeting with Mr. Martin. He continued to carry on. The board members then motioned to it. I'm proud of everything I do, and I'm proud of my family. I spent a lot of time with my grandfather as a youngster, as many of yous have heard. My grandfather came to this country, and he tried to teach his family and his children many things. And one thing that always comes to my mind is what he talked about, that he came here because this country enables you the freedom of speech. It enables you to speak up, speak what you want to say. And he would look at me in the eye and say, "Son, when you do that, speak the truth." Mr. Karyatnik comes from, is in the same country as I am, has the opportunity to speak up at any time and make speech. His speeches and his truths are not true. He makes unsubstantiated statements and false accusations. He stated at our meeting, and has stated at your meeting, and just previously stated, that he had an arrangement with Weatherfield Township to buy properties associated with this property. And that was ruined, that was ruined by the Land Bank, and the Land Bank gave that idea to someone else. I spoke with trustees from Weatherfield Township Monday morning. I hate to inform you of this, and I don't like doing this, but I will. Weatherfield Township has no record of any conversation with Mr. Karyatnik, any deal with Mr. Karyatnik, or any transaction that was to occur with him. He states that Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership told him that they were the, he was the only application for the property. In no way, shape, or form, would the rules that Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership loomed by enable any employee to make that statement to anybody. Only common sense, if you sit and think about it. Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership that oversees the Land Bank has policies in place to address complaints with properties. They will not address any questions of a property of that nature to anyone during the period of time it's for Sam. They're not going to offer anyone the information of another person that's filled out information on that property, or tell anyone that there is no one else making a purchase. I get really mixed up, because at your meeting, the previous meeting, that I wasn't in attendance, but I was able to watch on YouTube, I believe it is, he states that he has 51 years of his life tied up in that property, and we had away from it. I've done extensive research on the foreclosure of that property. It was a very long, hard foreclosure, it took County Treasurer's office almost eight years to finalize foreclosure on that property. Foreclosures run into a lot of stumbling blocks, and a lot of roadblocks, as the prosecutor's office definitely stand behind me and support that statement. We run into things such as bankruptcy filings, stay of actions, the fourth. So, when I hear the statement made by him that he had 51 years of his life in that bowling alley, I went back to look at the foreclosure case. Because hearing that statement, along with another statement that he makes, that we're letting people create tax links, and see them were selling back their property for nothing, kind of contradicts each other. If he was involved in that property for 51 years, he kind of jeopardized us by the possibility of purchasing that property, if he was, in fact, a successful purchase. I do not see any evidence of that occurring, though. So, the statement of 51 years of his life involved there really mixes me up quite a bit. Mr. Kary, George states that he is embarrassed and appalled by my appearance, that he is appalled that I am the county treasurer, and I come to work dressed shirt and everything. My dress has nothing to do with my position as county treasurer. What does have something to do with my pride of being county treasurer is some of the many accomplishments I have made, and will continue to do so till the day I retire, September 1st, 2025. I have received the highest election vote total of any Trumbull County treasurer, the amount of 65,798 electoral votes. I think the only elected office holder that has received more votes than me is-
He's defending his character, which you did bring up in his appearance last time, so I'm gonna give him a chance to continue.
I believe the only elected official that has ever received more votes than that is County Prosecutor Watson. The main duty of the county treasurer is overseeing the county portfolio. You ask, "Where do I work? Where am I? Am I in this building?" You have no idea what the county treasurer does. The main duty of the county treasurer is to oversee the county portfolio. I oversee a $170 million county portfolio every single day. Trumbull County is one of the only counties, the only county treasurer that does not hire an independent agency to oversee the portfolio. It's all done in-house, saving the money, saving money for the county. To date, during my term as county treasurer, I have earned the county $29,897,609. I created the first paper, dry-fold bill that you received for your taxes. That enabled us to stop using cardstock bills, and enabled us to include an envelope with your bill at a cheaper mailing cost than the previous cardstock bill. I created the monthly coupons that our escrow customers receive every month. I installed the first in the State of Ohio Treasurer's Office, OCR scanning and click, enabling us to have an instant picture of your check and your bill. It is now used by over 70 county treasurers. I have worked alongside the employees in my office at every tax collection during everything from processing mail to accepting payments. I have made over 150 presentations as county treasurer or Land Bank chairman. I created the outside Dropbox that enables people to drop off their payments. With the help of the maintenance department, we had to move it a few different times, but it is now probably in the best location it ever was. I have filed more foreclosures than my two predecessors combined. I created the third land bank in the state of Ohio that you're upset with. We were the third creating land bank, we are the smallest county to have a land bank up until four years ago. There are now 74 land banks, and many of those land banks use our same policies and our same programs that you are upset with. Our land bank program has accomplished everything in Trumbull County Tax District. Every single tax district has had something occur because of our land bank. We are at 1,400-plus demolitions. We are at 600-plus renovations, and we are at 2,000-plus buy lots. I have a wonderful son, beautiful daughter-in-law, a great daughter, a very caring son-in-law, and four grandchildren. I am retiring in September of '25 for one reason, and one reason only. Because the dedication that I have given, and have been assaulted for not doing, to the Trumbull County Treasurer's Office and the Trumbull County Land Bank, has stole time from me and my family. Going to spend my retirement with those wonderful grandchildren I have, and I will continue to help the Land Bank program in any way I can after retirement. I am extremely sorry that a man has a dislike for our program, and carries on in an atmosphere that is not called for, the dislike that he has been given the opportunity to set an appointment, as our procedures dictate, to have his purchase go, went over, and he will be shown why he did not receive the property. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for letting me address the question. Mr. Malloy, did you have any questions of me, or did you receive different information from Mr. Martin?
The only thing I heard from Mr. Martin, I don't know if it's true or not, but he said, "Mr. Karyatnik, you have contacted that office on many occasions with at least three different aliases or different names, applications where you identified yourself with somebody else, asking questions, and they were able to prove that it was you." I don't understand that. I don't understand why they feel that way, or if it's true or not, but they said that on at least three, possibly more, they've had more?
Oh, yeah.
Were you contacting them with aliases, and he said, "It's hard to believe when you call one day as one guy, and another day as another guy, and you apply as a different guy." That just, to them, doesn't add credibility to your story.
That's incorrect. Okay. We have five of us that purchased properties for the past eight years. Up in Wood, the city county, where you need more information, if, if it's an estate sale, there's five or six, we go in, we make an offer, we buy the property, resell it, flip it, whatever. We have an email set up for that. Jessica and Matt knew from the get-go, when they were talking to Ryan and a few other people that were involved in the group. I had the emails that I sent right off the grid go. This is Gio, gonna be talking to nobody but George on a property at 1581 North Main Street, even though it's coming from our group email, the business email. And I signed every email, my name. I started off by that. They were all okay with that. Your email, also your email, and Mara, your email, he states that no employee would talk about property, some sort, they wouldn't talk about the property like that, and say there was nobody else interested. I am gonna send you the emails from them, telling me exactly who was interested in the property, where it was, at the point, nobody was interested in the property except me. So, that's false. I could prove that.
Well, that, I think, I don't think that's a place for us here in a board of commissioners either. I gotta stand as-
Well, I'm gonna send that to you, because he's called me a liar.
You can send it, but I think if you still have a discrepancy at this point, he's made it clear that they've offered you the opportunity to come in and talk, following the regular chain of command, and sit down with Mr. Martin, you refuse.
If there's nothing wrong with transparency about everything, why can't you just stay in an open meeting and be done with this?
Because their business does business their way with their policies and procedures. You gotta follow the chain of command. People can't just come in here and talk to a commissioner and bypass all the chain of command and stuff. If you exceed it, or I should say, if you expended all of the proper chain of command, and still something wasn't following, you still weren't happy, then you have the opportunity, I would say at that point, to reach out to someone above that, reach out to the outside, go to the media, go to the Ethics Commission, do whatever.
I'm not doing that, I'm doing ethics. I mean, I already said that in-
But it sounds like they've offered, why haven't you sat down with Mr. Martin and done an appointment, to hear what he has to say?
Well, you guys run the board.
But he's the director, he's the guy that's running it.
So, I think there's a sort of a fundamental misunderstanding. We are on the board, we're board members, but we, the contracted agent of the board is TNP, is Trumbull Neighborhood Partnership.
You don't oversee it?
We oversee it, but they have their own policies and procedures as a nonprofit that they follow.
Okay, then that's why I'm not gonna get to you.
And we adopt those policies and procedures at our meetings.
I'm not worried about his grandfather. God bless him. I'm not worried about him.
I'm just telling you how it works.
I understand that, but you're on the board. I think being on the board, if I was on a board, I'd be concerned if somebody came in and made this claim. I'd be, I'd have them in here talking about it.
But here's the next step, you have to go to them to make this claim.
When I went there that day, I did, and when I asked him, "What's bylaws? Do you have bylaws?" "I know, so I know how much time I'm allowed to speak." He wouldn't give me one. So, there's, there's nothing like that, you know. 51 years is another false accusation. I was there when I was five years old, I'm 61. Okay, so, so he's telling me, no, you let him speak, to try to put me down and rip at me and say I lied about everything.
How were you involved in the property in 51 years? You did say that at the last meeting.
My mother, on a Sunday night, had me, I was born, Sunday night, on a mixed doubles day, after my mother and father, both, straight to the hospital, I was born. When I was five years old, I was born my first league there. Even when it was sold from my-
So, you were patron there, you were a customer, you were an owner, you were a man's man.
I was born in the leagues when I was five years old.
I understand that, I understand that.
The only time I did not bowl there is when it went into foreclosure. Even after Ron sold it, I still went there previously to bowl, not as much. I'm 61, five years old from bowl, that comes up to about almost 50 years of being involved in there. I did speak to the Weatherfield. I never said that they were, I wanted to buy it. I said, "Here's my plan. Here's what I want to do." And they said, "If it comes to fruition, and this happens, then make it official, come to a Weatherfield trustee meeting, and let them know what you're doing." You know, when I spoke to him, off camera, I guess, or not in a meeting, this was just coming into place, step one, step two. I wanted to buy it, and I talked to the Weatherfield trustee. But I never made no official statement saying, "We agree." We never agreed. He said, "It was a great idea, and he don't see no reason why they wouldn't do that, with the property just sitting there making no money. If you're gonna buy this property, why not, if you have this, these lots, then we can start collecting taxes from you." So, and I never, like he said, I never had an agreement with him. I never went in between.
It was an idea.
It was an idea that I spoke to him about. And if they liked it, then I was gonna submit it. If they said, "No," then I wasn't gonna waste my time or their time. They liked the idea, because they reflect on tax money. Now, how does the girl tell me, the buyer of the property, how does he come up with this idea? I mean, are there two people that had this idea to buy that property, and all of a sudden, go to Weatherfield and get that property? I don't think so. Just don't think so.
But we don't know that. You're making assumptions.
That could have come from a Weatherfield trustee that you talked to. Could have come from someone that heard you talking to the Weatherfield trustee.
I can't do it now, but when it comes to the girls, and like I said, I feel bad for them, but the recording's gonna come out, and they lose their jobs, I can't, there's nothing I can do about it. I had to come back here, the second step, I sent the letter of ethics, they want the videos, I sent them the first one, they also want the second one. I just feel, and we all know, you read social media, you got everything, you know. I'm outspoken on political officials, and it's real simple, it's like a social security number is like a car VIN. You hook up a car VIN, you tell everywhere that car went, who owned it, where it went. You look at last four socials, 0760, when it pops up, no, 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 no. It happens, I know it happens. And it's happened in this, and when you have two employees, I'm not saying, you know, we feel bad for you, because this happened like that, you know. They're in the office with them, so obviously, they know what's going on, you know. And I was overlooked because of who I was, and don't have to admit it, but you know, with my political views, you know that was true. I told you-
I can't say that, no, I don't know.
$450,000 in the bank, I told you that last week. $450,000 in the bank. I'm not sending you my, actually, it's four- I'm not sending you my four hun- my, actually it's four hundred and fifty one.
I don't know exactly what the false accusations are.
I'm not sending you my bank information to an email with that much money in there. I'm not doing it. And that was one of their sticky points? I thought, let me come in and give it to you. You can take it. No. They forced me to open up a new bank account to show them I had just enough money to do it. And then put me off for two weeks. When I talked to her, uh, not this time, no, nobody, all of a sudden, two weeks later, what's going on? Are we found somebody? I also was talking to him too, but I'm leaving that out of it for now. But I just, if my name's on a board, I'd be upset.
I do think the first step in this is having a sit-down with Mr. Martin and that, and, and having that one-to-one conversation.
I've actually done a one-on-one before.
But, but Matt is the director of, you know, T N P. So, I mean, Jessica may not make those types of decisions. Matt does. So, um.
I asked her, I had the email, who's in charge? She said, well, you, you talk to me for now. So why would I go anywhere else?
Cause they, they've told you, even Mr. Lamigusa told you, here's the process. Here's what you need to do.
He just said that now.
If you're not gonna listen to him on that, we can't help you at all.
He just stayed to that right now. I'm talking six months ago with the email that says, I'm in charge, you know, you can talk to me and... Why would I go anywhere else when I have Jessica from the, uh, land bank saying to me in an email, it's fine, just talk to me and send everything to me? She would've said, hey, Matt's the director. You should contact him about it. Now, after this was all gone through, Matt sends me an email. Nice to have it. He said, Gio, I've been reading all these emails about this piece of property. Uh, so on, and I, and then I emailed him back and I said, you have all these emails. Why didn't you jump in and say, hey, this is what's going on? Why do you just keep letting this build and build and build? Why did you let Jessica take it? I got the emails from that saying that and I'll send them to you to back my story that I'm not, uh, making false accusations about. I never tried. And, you know, it's because I have a business of email that we go and buy properties. Is that illegal? I mean, is that illegal? No, it's not illegal. Come on. Why am I so wrong to have people trying to flip houses and properties?
Well, I, I guess, like I said, the simple solution, at least the next starting point is making an appointment with Matt Martin as Commissioner told you, as I told you, as Mr. Lamigusa told you. Matt will meet with you. We'll see to that. I mean, as a board member, we can see that he will meet with you and sit down and go over his reasoning on why the other property got it compared to you. If you don't like that answer, then you could take it up the chain above and beyond that. But at least you gotta follow, you gotta do your part to follow policy and procedure too to do the correct stuff.
I agree.
And this is, and this is the correct step. And if there's something wrong with that step, if there's a disagreement in procedure, if there's a disagreement where you feel that it's been biased, you feel you've been wrong, then there are, there are means to go above that, to challenge that. But all, we can't do any of that stuff until you at least sit down with the guy and get the answer that he has.
Here's what I'm gonna do for the record. I'm gonna call Matt Martin and I'm gonna take, I'll take his meeting. Somebody would like to join, so it's a third party, so nobody said, he said, she said, and there's no.
You, you have the right to bring someone in with you if you want.
All right, I'll do that. And then, uh, we'll go from there, but gonna go over that. But I'll do that just for your change of mind.
It's, it's, you have to. I mean, we can't skip steps. Cause if you get any feel above that, they're gonna say the same thing. Why didn't you do that?
I'll have an e- well, I won't have my secretary, I'll email him myself personally from my own email, not the company email. What would be better for you?
No, that would be great. Reach out to him as you. Say you wanna sit down with him and find out why you didn't hear his answer out and hear his answer out and listen to what he says. If there's a discrepancy there, then you take it to the next step. I think we're step two early.
And before that's fine, I'll do that, but I am gonna send you the email that she stated what was going on step by step with that property with the previous buyers as well as the future buyers.
And, and I would also say, if you make copies of that, give that to Mr. Martin too. He's the boss. And, and let him.
Well, he got him cause he.
Well, I mean, I'm saying officially present it to him in your meeting. Any discrepancies you have there, let him do his job, but what he gets paid to do.
I'll go one more step. I'll play the game, I guess. I'll play it. You know, but, uh, and I wanna make no mistake about it. This meeting here is not to intimidate, not to induce physical harm to anybody. Just so everybody know, nothing happened here that was out of the ordinary.
Well, I, I believe you feel you've been wrong, but I, I think there's a step that's been missed at this point. So, so for us to take a side without going that next step, I think is premature.
That's fine. I'll, I will do that and, uh.
And I'd say that to any citizen that's.
We'll go from there. We'll do the next step and I'll see you probably in a week or two. Thank you. Looking forward to your call. Do you have anything to do?
Commissioner, we have also, if we could.
Yeah.
We've got a fire chief that needs to get back to his township.
Yes.
And, uh, Rick, you wanna introduce?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioner, almost Commissioner.
Commissioners, sorry, good morning, almost Commissioner. Uh, thank you, sir. Rick Hernandez, uh, Hubbard Township trustee. I'm the chairman of the board of the Eagle Joint Fire District. Uh, Chief Standish is here today to make a presentation. Uh, the, uh, Eagle Joint Fire District's in the need of ambulances. And, um, I'll let, um, I'll let Chief Standish take the floor.
Chief, tell us about who you, what area you cover too.
Um.
For those that don't know, they're in the joint.
Like Mr. Hernandez said, uh, I'm with the Eagle Joint Fire District. We cover Hubbard City, Hubbard Township. We are a district that provides EMS fire service for both communities. Uh, the community population is roughly twenty thousand six hundred. Um, we have eight surrounding fiduciary departments that we respond to. That's basically about us, what, what we do. Uh, we have roughly thirty-eight part-time employees. We're moving into full-time status. Hopefully in June, we'll, we'll be able to put some part-time people on. I'm here, I wanna thank you for entertaining us. I won't take too much of your time. I know everybody's busy. But, um, I'm here to, um, ask permission to submit a late entry for the ARPA funds for, uh, for purchase of ambulances. Um, we purch- we started, uh, EMS service transport roughly in twenty-two. Board has been very proactive in trying to, um, provide a service once the privates had left, private EMS service. Uh, we purchased two used ambulances back in twenty-two. Um, they have high mileage, high upkeep, major repairs. And with ever increasing costs to run a fire department, um, with consideration of the commissioners, if there's any funding left over, um, it'll help ensure the future of our fire department financially. So at this time, I'm just asking to, um, submit a, a late application for ARPA.
Total of two ambulances, correct? Not one, two?
Yes, two, because both of them are, um, high mileage.
Chief. I just wanna let him know about the, uh, cost, the, uh, fact that we were able to negotiate a, uh, very reasonable rate on those ambulances.
Oh, with the, the overall cost, the, uh, ambulances, uh, they were ordered, I think, a year and a half ago, and the buyer backed out of the deal from Penn Care. Uh, Penn Care actually gave us a pretty good deal on both aim, and I think they're a hundred and seventy-nine thousand each. So that was, that was the deal on those that we got. Uh, we signed a, a commitment with them. So I, I think they're, um, gonna be delivered in June, as early as June.
This was something, uh, Commissioner, uh, Mr. Hernandez reached out to me. Hubbard Township had one request that was denied. They resubmitted a request, uh, for ADA bathrooms, I believe it is.
Yes.
And then Hubbard City has made a couple of different requests to us that have not been fulfilled yet. Um, both the mayor and Mr. Hernandez inquired on the status of their things. And Mr. Hernandez said, you know, this, we really, really needed ambulance. After we read in the paper that we, ambulances are being approved. Um, and they had talked about withdrawing their Hubbard Township request and putting it toward the ambulance. I said, I don't think that's fair because the joint fire district covers a region there. And I didn't think it'd be fair for Hubbard City or Hubbard Township to take the hit for the fire district. I view them as their own entity, kinda like what we did with, uh, Newton Township with the, the, uh, brush fire vehicle that they requested. I didn't wanna penalize Newton Falls or Braceville or anyone for that, uh, region. Um, so I told them to come here today. Um, I, I believe the cost of one ambulance at this time with the money we see that we know that we have would be a reasonable request. Two ambulances at this time with the money, not knowing what we have, I think, would be kinda hard. All the other communities got one. Many of them wanted two and they, they got the one. And with coming in late, I do know we'll at least have, as we're saying, one point something million left. And I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get too close to the bottom barrel, scraping the bottom. But I think at this time for that community that covers such a big area, with them being a startup and after post-COVID twenty twenty-two and trying to stay viable into the future, I think it's a reasonable request for us to not have Hubbard Township retractors and replace, not affect anything that Hubbard City has and allow them to enter the portal. And, uh, you know, I would, I'd recommend that we, we put them in as a yes for, for one ambulance for their joint fire district.
I agree. And, um, you know, we've made a concerted effort to try to find safety forces across the county. So it would be no different, I guess.
And I don't wanna offend you without the two, but we got, we, we went with one. We see what's left at the end. We, we have a lot of communities that, that got one and to come in late in the game when Zeta and other places may have wanted two and, and got one. I think it's, um, I'm sure you'd be acceptable to one rather than.
Absolutely. Uh, like I said, uh, Mr. Hernandez, Hernandez and I talked and requested and then take what we get basically. So I appreciate anything, any of what we.
Otter Yoder, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, so just to clarify, putting, uh, the request for one and if you send it, um, uh, Mr. Hernandez has my email. If you send it to my email, that's the portal now.
Okay.
Um, but just modify it to one and send it to me. And I assume bottom of the list on the yes.
Just on bottom of the yes, in order. You know, we can't jump in.
Right. I just wanted to make sure.
Cut another community with that, but.
Okay.
We can't let you cut one.
Bottom of the list doesn't mean no.
I understand that.
Right. Bottom of the list is still on the yes list and it's, it's, uh, we actually have, um, had sixteen that are not with her yet. So we're doing really well. We're working our way down to now it'll be seventeen. But, so, yeah, go ahead and send it to me.
And, and price-wise, you know, there's, I think, the average cost of ambulance we've been paying is about a hundred and fifty-three thousand. Although Zeta did get two hundred.
Some of it's smaller, yes.
They've been like one fifty-three, two hundred, so one seventy-nine in that range.
Okay.
And, and I, I, I assume, and I, you, you're submitting the, the numbers here too, which is very helpful to our legal counsel, that, that the numbers will bear out the, the need for this.
Yes.
Because of the increase and everything. So, um, cause she looked at that too when she's approving. Uh, our legal counsel, because, um, you, you know, it has to be tied to the need that, um, is happening due to the epidemic, basically, or that has happened, you know?
Yes.
So, um, I think these numbers will bear it out just by looking at it.
Okay.
Glancing over.
Um, Ms. Yoder, you, um, you stated to go in the portal and do this?
Not, well, no. My, my email address.
Okay.
Um, the Otter Mule, and I think Rick has that, right? Do you have my email?
So I can send it directly to you?
Directly to me, yeah.
Okay.
There's no.
You have, is there an application he's filed for specific?
They have the application, I believe.
Well, I.
I, I sent it to Mr..
I was unable to fill that out online for some reason. Um, but I kinda followed, there's like a three-page introduction.
Send me what you have and if I need to have any, with, with just one. And if there's any modifications that need to be done. But that should've been a, it's a PDF and it should've been fillable. You should've been able to.
I tried a week ago. I couldn't, I was unable to, so.
You might have to do it on a laptop, not a phone. That's the way you try it.
I tried it on my laptop.
You did?
Okay. But I, I'll, I'll give you that, uh, required information.
And if, if, as long as we have all the information that the application asks for, if that's fine, I think it should be fine.
Can, can, could I submit that and just change that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just do that. That's fine.
I appreciate that.
That's fine. Just change the amount.
You need it, you need a backer. I'm sure you have a safe copy.
I have several. Anybody wanna take a look at that?
And, and like you said, Rick has, uh, Mr. Hernandez has my email. So, um, and I believe I sent, when I sent out the application, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Are you?
Wrong.
I, I sent it to Mr. Vinkler.
Yes.
So he has my email as well. So it came from me. All right?
All right. Well, thank you for consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. You didn't even need the muscle. You got it.
Oh, yeah.
Martin, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Martin, is this what you, you're telling me I'm filling out the application?
I.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Nope, you're good to go, Sam.
That's it.
Thank you for being here, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And did you have anything in particular at the beginning?
Just a minute. Um, thank you.
One, you want to, we have to identify your direction.
Hi, sir.
Hi, I'm Sarah Doherty. I'm with Bright Energy Innovators. And on the agenda, there's a request for two letters of support for the Appalachian Regional Commission power application. One is for Bright, our organization, and one is for Yance Town Business Incubator. Uh, for Bright, we're seeking funding for the renovation of our facility here on Courthouse Square. As you know, it's a very beautiful facility. Um, it was renovated prior to the organization having programming. During the pandemic, we saw a quadruple increase in the demand for our services. And, um, the space was not renovated to meet the demand that we see for people utilizing the facility. There's currently one restroom and we typically have two hundred fifty, three hundred people in the building. It's just not sustainable. So the funding is to replace, um, the HVAC and other things and, um, really make the space more conducive for the things, particularly, um, the supply chain companies related to Kimberly Clark and Foxconn what to do right here in Courthouse Square and employ people in the local community. The second request from Yance Town Business Incubator, that is to support advanced manufacturing in Trumbull County. Um, there's a lot in that request, but mainly it says to support small and mid-sized manufacturers, uh, get into new markets, particularly around electrical vehicles and semiconductors. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Those are just, uh.
Letters of support.
Letters of recommendation for that, which, yeah, I would wholeheartedly support.
Thank you. And I apologize if that's a step out, but.
No, no problem.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, can, before we get started, can I get something to drink here for my?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Take your, take a pause.
Lisa, item twenty-two.
And sir, I don't, I don't know about you before.
He's not.
It's the last one.
Okay.
Uh, it's far, it's far viewing and you have. I can just see a little. Um, Lisa, yeah, yeah. Get, uh, work with Lisa?
Yes, she has.
And she'll tell you whatever you need.
Thank you for pointing that out.
All right. Yeah, I just noticed it when I was looking at it. All the way. Can you give me a couple of signatures, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
That's like this one. Brookfield plant. Amort is an April four thousand bucks, I guess. And this is for one of the, all my contractors on.
Thank you.
How many trout you catch? It was, uh, pretty much a bust. I caught two trout. That was it. Really? One on a Sunday, one on Sunday. That was it. Lot of rain? Washed it out or? No, that perk was the highest I've ever seen. Usually during the high water under the island, I can go out and get on, you know, and be able to work that current to my left and my right. The whole island was underwater. I, I couldn't even get to that. I tried to go to stand on it with that water rippling over top of it and almost fell in. And I said, well, that's not gonna work either, so. Yeah, it was, it was worse than it ever was. I was, uh, able to. Think I was a little early and come back there and see the eclipse.
You went to see it?
Hmm?
Got to see the eclipse?
Yeah. I was hoping they, they would've had some good coverage up there. I wanted to be in the Kirk fishing during the eclipse.
That would've been cool.
Yeah, I know, but, uh. I forget what the percentage there was, but they said it wouldn't even dim the light, so.
Wow. I, um, I think I had the best seat in the house. I was up on top of the roof.
Okay.
I was great.
All right, okay.
Kim Engel was with me and she, um, she actually got a really great picture of the courthouse, like right at totality. It was beautiful. I, well, I wanna. I'm actually gonna do that in my office. Yeah.
I would like to have it for myself.[1752.22]
Kim and I-
The money to go to the dog kennel.
Dog kennel, yes.
Commissioner, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go to Auditor Yoder because she has a previous engagement also, so we're going to jump ahead to the ARPA stuff, you're good?
I gotta do ARPA. I have the first seven items on the agenda and, or not quite all the first, and then I have you guys, I need to get you guys to spell some names for my dog license draw.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go as fast as we can. So approvals, denials, and updates, most of this I gave you last week, but I also wanted to kind of just review it with you. Um, there's currently eight requests pending with Attorney Rogers, and you see the list there. Um, in the last two weeks, we had some requests denied. One was Warren Township, um, for their Johnston Community Center improvement at sixty-seven, four fifty, and they have not received any direct grants at all to Township. There's two county projects that directly benefit Warren Township, the Meadowbrook Sewer Project and the FEMA Flood Plan Study. Johnston Township, um, they had an addition for material storage that was labeled an error on the sheet, Sheetus Park, but it was the actual project notes and everything that was sent to council was correct. That was thirty-six thousand. They also had a sign, twenty-two, one sixty-nine. Johnston has received three other grants totaling two hundred and six thousand, three ninety-nine. Mespo Township Hall, their Township Hall renovation, this is actually their second time trying to get this through and it was denied again, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The Township has received no funds, but the Historical Society has received sixty-five thousand dollars. The Kinsman Sign, uh, forty-one, sixty-five, seventy-nine. Kinsman Township has the green space approved for one fifty-nine, four sixty-nine, fifty, and has a pending request for thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight, sixty-four for generators. Um, I gave you this last week, um, and have them as denied on your, uh, spreadsheet, um, but I don't know if, and any of them you would like to have the money frozen. Also, since Warren Township is the only one that it has, um, and also under the amount of that local assistance and tribal consistency fund where things are a little bit more lenient, um, that we've received, um, and we've received that a hundred and three thousand for that, and remember, I want to remind you guys that I've also had that listed. It's not an additional amount over what we've had that listed before. And I wondered if you would like me to ask Attorney Rogers if it would be eligible under the tribal consistency.
Yeah, un- unless they want to submit something else, but I mean, we're getting-
We're getting down to the wire.
We're getting down to the wire.
I did send an email back to Attorney Rogers contesting the Kinsman Sign and Johnson Sign. When they did the pitch to us, basically with Johnson especially, what they were asking for is a lighted sign at the road, much like what City Cortland has right now where they can put warnings on there, they can put, um,
Right.
Anything that comes from, uh, CDC or, you know, mask mandates, anything, a lot of the residents in Kinsman and Johnson are, are most elderly residents of the county, and a lot of them don't have cell phones, a lot of them don't have internet, and I thought for that being in the community center, a way to get messages out to the people with public health risks and, and let the people know what's going on, when a meeting is, when-
Did you get a response from her?
I did not get a response from her yet.
I can follow up with that and see if-
She said, she did say she was going to look into it, that she would hit, look at it from a different angle.
Okay, that's fine.
From the safety angle, she was looking at it from signage, and now with the safety angle, I don't, I think she may have overlooked that, or I'm hoping she does.
Okay. All right.
I'm hoping she finds a way for both those communities to approve those.
Okay. Um, and with regard though to the other ones, particularly Mespo, do you want that money frozen and have them submit something else? Or, because that, they do not, the Township itself does not have any other requests that are approved.
Unless we use the tribal money to approve it.
But that's not enough. It's a hundred and se- uh, the tri- the-
Yeah, we don't want to burn off the-
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and that's a hundred and three, it's a hundred and seventy thousand. Um.
I would have them submit something else.
Okay.
I'd have, yes.
I will, I will reach back out to them and-
That, I would still, I would have them submit something else or deal with Tanya.
Well, I don't-
Find other angles again with a similar-
This is, I'm going to tell you what, this is twice it's been there.
Yeah.
Angles have been tried. I think, I think based on, you know, I was going to get to that in just a second, based on the email that we got from Attorney Rogers last week.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it's a capital request, because they can't prove some of the things that they need to prove, I don't think it's going to fly. But I will, I will reach back out to them and talk to them about that. Um, I wanted to get to the email from Attorney Rogers just really briefly. Um, she's been receiving calls and emails from applicants whose applications have not yet been forwarded to her. She didn't specify which ones, but I, I wondered if you would like me to just do an email to all the remaining ones on the yes list that are not there, just explaining that they are not to contact her, she will contact them for follow-up.
What I, what I would say is, if you do send that email, just state that they were approved by the Commissioners as a yes, moved on to legal. Legal was doing their due diligence, they made your return.
But they haven't been moved on, they haven't been moved on to legal yet. We're not moving every single request on to legal. But they, every single, I'm going to tell you, every single applicant has been told that being on this list, I've emailed every single one of them, that being on this list does not guarantee that they're approved.
Right.
That they will be sent to legal, but they're, not all of them have been gone to legal yet. Remember, we're doing that gradually, right? So I'm, I'm, I'm good, I can reiterate that as they're-
They may be there in the process of being sent to legal, they will hear from legal, please be patient.
Right, 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 yeah. That's exactly what I'll do. I'll, I'll be nice.
I just say, soften up a little bit from the way that you started, right?
I, I promise, I can. I can be nice. Hey.
Well, we, we want the gentle little, we want the gentle little auditor for this one, right?
Here, I'm writing beside it. Be nice. Okay. Um, she also said that recipients are call, calling her asking if they can use the money awarded for other purposes if their projects come in at less than anticipated. Um, again, would you like me to reach out to all the recipients and explain that unless funds are utilized for the express purpose, those funds need to be returned?
You put in the same email?
Well, it won't be the same because they're different people. These are people that have been awarded, right? Okay, so, and I'll be nice. All right, while she alluded, I wanted to make sure that you understood that while she alluded to some projects that are on her desk potentially being denied in that email, she did not give me any formal denial yet on any of those. Um, she also discussed the issues with capital projects in the Township. I do want to note that of the sixteen, now seventeen, left on the yes list to her, there are seven projects, uh, from five Townships. Of those, there are a couple that I think might be considered capital projects, but I do want to make sure that we just keep moving these along to her because the ones that I sort of thought, well, might, maybe they are, I'd like her to look at, so I don't want to make any changes to this list as far as sending those on. So I just wanted to let you know that, um, how many we had that would have been in that situation. Your packet has updated yes and allocated promise sheets and then the updated mini sheet, and I'm going to go grab my stuff so you guys can-
Okay, while you're doing that, if Shara is listening, um, I know we talked about this last week, and they accommodated us, but are we able to have a check for tomorrow for Kinsman, for one of the trustees to pick up the big check at our meeting tomorrow again? Can you check with the Minuteman and see if they've printed any since last week, or if they can come up with another one? Because we do have a presentation tomorrow with Kinsman that I would like to, uh, present to Mr. Bancroft or Mr. Leonard or, uh, whoever may want to be here tomorrow to receive that, which I think one of them would.
Um, this drawing is, these are all the people that bought dog licenses in, um, February, or they bought them from vendors throughout the season. So I'm going to do two of these. You folks will get a certificate for a license next year.
Awesome.
At the auditor's expense, by the way, non- just wondering if people-
Personal.
My personal phone, the little auditor's personal.
Lawyers.
Okay. Suzanne Moss is the first one.
Suzanne.
Yep.
Nikki's neighbor is the second one.
Is it really?
Caitlin Limerowski.
Thank you.
That was very nice, thank you.
Uh, next week, I'm going to bring this up, draw for those baskets that I made for folks that donated either items or money to the Dog Town or, or the Winters charity, so we're going to have that next week, I just want to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on with the agenda. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I have some items.
Okay.
Huh? I got a lead. I know, well, there are, there's like six items or whatever.
Anything else, Auditor Yoder, or?
Just the items on the agenda, yeah.
Okay, uh, we're going to start out with a moment of silence for Sister Jean Orsuda, former Children's Services Board member. I mean, her, reading her, uh, resume, uh, obituary, just unbelievable. She's basically a saint of Tremble County that was lost, and so it'll be a well-deserved moment of silence for her at the beginning of the meeting tomorrow. Uh, dispense with the minutes, approve the bills, transfer money, sanitary engineers, ten thousand dollars.
So Bob's not here this week, so he gave us some explanations that you guys have all received. Um, so that, uh, the ten thousand dollars on that one, the transfer is to startup funding for Scoville Drive Sewer Project.
Approve the transfer appropriations. Sheriff's Office, five grand.
Sheriff's Office, five grand is for office supplies. Dog Kennel, two thousand, is for vehicle maintenance. Um, the next, all the sanitary engineers except for the ten thousand one are to move old water fund appropriations to other funds to close out that fund, and then the, uh, the ten thousand dollar one for sanitary is, uh, sludge semi-truck maintenance. Um, your office is subscription and workforce development, and the fifty thousand is increasing the consultant account. Uh, highway, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand is an increase in various accounts, including payroll-related equipment, communication and safety, and highway safety and roads.
What was the second Commissioner's Office? Was that workforce development as well?
No, it was consultant account.
Oh.
Okay, and highway, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, increase in various accounts, including payroll-related equipment, uh, communication and safety, and highway safety and roads.
Okay, number five, approve additional appropriations.
Okay, Commissioner's Office is, uh, Gerard City Prosecutor, and it was fixing an error. The contract was four thousand dollars and only thirty-six, sixty-six, sixty-seven was originally requested. The sanitary engineer, um, the next, let's see, are all of them? The next two are moving money from the, uh, to the new water fund, and then the next sanitary engineer, the forty-five, fifty-five, is the final easement for Scoville Drive Sewer Project. The two hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three, forty is, uh, the June, December bond principal and interest payments, domestic relations court, uh, the first, there's three of them for ten thousand. Those are all for the first floor remodel. The Sheriff's Office, the five thousand is add phones and training expenses.
Decrease appropriations, Auditor's Office.
All right, so that's the two hundred and fourteen, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, or two hundred and fourteen thousand, three, three hundred and thirty-three, forty, and this is, um, it corresponds up to the debt, it's just a, so that increased and this decreased.
Okay, number seven, adopt a resolution approving the list provided labeled as then and now, Commissioners, March twenty twenty-four. A purchase orders to the various vendors as then and now purchase orders in compliance with O R C fifty-seven oh five, forty-one D.
Um, Christie has explained this process several times for you guys. Um, this is when we don't have a P O done before, a purchase order done before the invoice. Um, we're getting better on this, um, as we go by, but we're still working on explaining that process to people and making sure they understand it. So it is getting better, um, and I, I think she's explained to you too before that anything under a hundred on these, I can approve, so I just do that.
Yeah, I see Ms. Taylor has graced us with her presence, and we'd probably like to speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sheriff Taylor account payable. Denny, since you called me on the carpet about the big check, I've spoken with Mr. Dean, and he will be bringing us his big check with our name covering it. We have to give it back, but it's a dry erase until ours are done.
Okay, but he did order some for us, we did order-
Well, I have to get the purchase order done.
Okay, let's, let's do like-
I just, I'm just getting the proof, so I'll, I'll get it. It's, it's-
I would get like twenty-five, just have them order twenty-five of them and be done, or get a big dry erase one anymore?
I just got a big giant, dry erase one. Is that okay?
I kind of like the idea too, of, we gave him the paper one, take it back and they hang it up in their Township Hall or whatever for the residents and see in their community hall or community center.
That's expensive.
That's paper, pad of paper.
They can take a picture of it.
We're giving a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar check.
That, well, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of what we were doing, is like, is for a picture. Like this one tomorrow, you can't, hey, this is just for a photo.
Yeah.
I'll be more than happy to take-
I don't wish, what do you think, fella?
Just make sure you get the purchase order before they even leave.
I know, I know, I know. Trust me, I am reaching for water.
That, it doesn't matter, yeah, it, it sounds like a good idea. I mean, we could get, if we could just get one of those big dry erasings, that's all I care about.
That, that's what we're-
We used to have that.
I know, we're going to get that one, we're going to have that, and what, what we could do is take a photo. We have a color pop here that we can immediately send to an email and print it out for them before they even leave.
Yeah.
How's that?
That would be fun.
Does that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay, because then you guys will be with each other.
But get a price on ones like about two foot long by foot, something they could take, that they could hang up on a wall, frame, do whatever.
Well, Dean is coming here at, he said he will be here around lunchtime, so.
I have to know about this.
We'll chit chat.
And, and some of my other jobs, we've had them, they've been on a tear-off where you just write them and it's something people take with them and they, you know, can just proudly display and bring to their Township meeting or Council meeting and show it around, kind of thing.
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
She'll talk you out of it.
Number eight, uh, concur with Tremble County Engineers Special Hauling Permit Steel Coils, Jero Transportation. Number nine, uh, concur, grant special animal supplier fleet permit, transport aggregate concrete construction goods, other materials, Tremble cement products. Concur to grant right-of-way permit requested by the company listed, CNS Networks. Concur authorizing Kinsman Township to establish legal weight limits on Township roads as listed, and this is per the recommendation of the engineer. Um, Ward North Road, ten ton, and Ward North Road, five ton. Well, award the lowest responsive and responsible bid is submitted by Shelley in Sands for the Everett Hall Road, Warren Meadville Road, Brookfield Avenue, Durst Colebrook Improvement Projects, uh, and the Tremble County Local Twenty Twenty Four Road Improvement Program in the amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, six fifty-five, fifty. And we pay directly by funding received by How Public Works Commission, received through Eastgate Council Governments, and three hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred we paid from the Engineers Fund. No general funds required and enter in a contract with Shelley in Sands for such a project. We had other bids also, um, Corilla and RT Vernal Paving and Excavating, and it shows on here Corilla was less by three hundred thousand.
So I have-
Okay, no, Shelley in Sands was one point three, the Shelley Company was one point seven, Corilla was in the middle of them, so they did the lowest bid.
Commissioner, I do, if we need an explanation too, I have Steve that, from the Highway Office that, that's just texting me. Steve, can you unmute yourself now and, um?
Star six, Steve.
Star six, sir. Steve Burberry on the line. Steve, can you hear me? Star six, unmute yourself, Steve.
Uh, Commissioners.
There you are, we got you, Steve.
Okay, sorry, I, I was unable to unmute, uh, there for a while, so, thanks for letting me in. Um, back, back to number eleven, um, that, that request, and I know it was submitted with the agenda item on the portal, but that, that request came from the Kinsman Township Trustees, um, to have, um, H R G do a study on their, the weight analysis for their roads.
And then the engineer recommended it after they requested it?
Correct, a- as there, you know, we're the engineer per the statute for the Township, so that's what the, uh, the study from H R G determined, so that was our recommendation.
Okay.
And then on number twelve, um, you know, I think it's important to note which roads that are going to be paved there. Um, Everett Hall Road, um, and that will be between Durst Clag and Hoagland Black Stubb in Bezetta Township. Warren Meadville Road between State Route Five and Three O Five in Bezetta Township. Brookfield Avenue between Addison and Warren Sharon Road in Brookfield Township. And, uh, Durst Colebrook Road between Warren Meadville and State Route Three O Five back in Bezetta. Those are all OPWC, um, funding for those pavements, and then local, um, Engineers Funds will finish up Everett Hall Road between North Park and Durst Clag in Bezetta, and then, um, Everett Hall from the city of Cortland Ridge over in Fowler. And then we're also going to do King Graves Road between State Route One Ninety-three and- And then we're also gonna do King Graves Road between State Route One Ninety-three and Five Points Hartford Road, which is in, you know, joint road with Vianna in Fowler Township.
All right, I get a, I get a question for you, Steve. Um, you said Warren Mead, you said Warren Meadville Road between Route Five and Three Oh Five?
Yep.
Does that go down by the Jericho Center? Isn't that where we're bringing the water line up from Champion, then cutting across under? Is that gonna cause any conflict there if they pave the road? And then we're gonna run our water line project this summer, the Elm Road Water Line Project, which is gonna start up? That road, I remember, cause I remember Jericho Center, the old red caboose is on that road. Is this gonna cause a conflict if we pave the road and then we gotta tear it up, or have our equipment on there to run a water line?
Uh, I don't know the details of that project exactly myself. Um, you know, we, we do try to coordinate with sanitary on those types of projects too, so, you know, I'm sure we could work with Gary and, um, do what's best, I, you know, for, for both of these projects.
Gary, you think that'd be a conflict?
All right, well, Commissioners, I know that, uh, my people called over there to Gary Schaefer, and they're, and we're both aware of what's going on here.
Okay.
Um, and we are instructing the contractor, as a matter of, uh, that we're, he has to start there on Warren Meadville. He, he has to build that portion first, mainly because ODOT, uh, informed us that we're not allowed to start on the Elm Road portion until July first or after, somewhere, somewhere in that neighborhood, cause they have some things they have to do out there. Um, we're doing, the majority of it is directional drill, uh, down Warren Meadville Road. So the only thing, like you mentioned, heavy equipment might be the only thing that may, uh, cause some problems with a newly paved road.
Or if we have equipment on the road, and we're trying to pave around it, or if the timeframe will coincide anyway, we don't want these people getting new water and water hookups, and they're getting a new road, then all of a sudden they're upset that, why'd you do this? Why don't you do one first, then the other, to make it look nice?
Well, that's why I'm wondering if the order of the paving i- on this, if they're going to Everett Hall first, and, uh, maybe Brookfield Avenue and do some of the other ones, and then wait for us to finish out there before they come in on Warren Meadville. But I know this was discussed with Gary Schaefer, and he didn't, as far as I know, he didn't, uh, raise any alarms about this.
Well, Mr. Burberry, if you could-
Maybe that's their plan.
Check with Gary Schaefer again, and make sure you communicate between the two offices, and make sure we don't step on each other when it comes to this. We want both jobs to look great and be flawless for the residents, and not be a tangled mess for both of them.
Uh, absolutely, uh, Gary's in a field meeting at the moment, or I'm sure he would be on. But, um, yeah, I'll, I'll talk with him this afternoon, and, uh, we'll coordinate.
Okay, very good.
All right.
That'll be good for the residents when it's done, but I'd be kind of upset if you paved my road, then you got it all muddied up and tore up. There's another agency came and, you know, tore it up with their truck.
Yeah, we, we don't want that to happen either.
Anything else, Steve?
No, I think that covers all our items, unless there's any other questions I'll try to answer.
Well, we still got a seat safe for you, if you wanna come back sometime, we, we miss you here.
Thank you.
Okay, you go to Kill Two Birds With One Stone today as a Weathersfield trustee also.
Oh, no.
So you, you were smart by not being here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Number thirteen, adopt the resolution proclaiming April fourteenth or April twentieth as National Public Safety Cellar Communicators Week. And this is gonna recognize our celler communicators, nine one one dispatchers, and as it says in here, thank you for a job well done. And they, um, they worked through the situation man last Monday flawlessly, and we appreciate all they do, especially being short-staffed as they are. Number fourteen, authorize Trumbull County Nine One One Dispatch Center Director Jason McDonough to purchase an annual license with Critical Online in the amount of sixty-two hundred seventy-eight dollars. Enter an agreement with Critical Online. Agreement will be for term commencing May one through May one, twenty twenty-five. Uh, this is for pre-testing for employees. They gotta figure a way to weed out the ones that aren't gonna make it earlier, so we don't invest time and money in them. And then, uh, as we've seen over the past year, um, many of them don't make it to the program or they leave. Number fifteen, award the lowest and best proposal submitted by Sotoli Carpet and Floor Covering for all labor and materials necessary for installation of new carpeting on the first floor of Trumbull County Family Court, including the removal of existing carpeting requiring moving and reset of furnishings as required of this project. Total amount of eleven thousand, seven eighty-six, eighty-nine. We went over this last week, um, and, uh, saw the, uh, that they were chosen last week, you know, this is the, um, official entry. Number sixteen, award the lowest and best bid response to Utility Contracting Inc. For the Almonds Wastewater Treatment Plant Replacement Project, known as Franny Project Number Nine, S twenty, and the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Metropolitan Subdistrict, in the amount of eight hundred seven thousand, four eighty-seven, and entering a contract for said project. And other bid submitted was F C T and Rudzik Excavating. Gary?
Yeah, Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer. Uh, Commissioners, we opened these bids, we don't have the bid opening date on here, but it has been, I wanna say at least a couple of months now. And we also submitted this project for House Bill Thirty-three funding. Um, and we asked for a half a million dollars. We are holding up on making the award on this contract until we heard back regarding our other half million dollar request. And, um, we haven't heard anything yet, but, uh, contractor can't hold his bid prices any longer. So we're gonna have to go ahead and do this award, and hopefully we will not, um, have the contracts completely executed and issue the notice to proceed until we get a determination from the state about their money. But we're okay going ahead and moving forward with this right now. And, uh, that House Bill Thirty-three, that application, I sent it in in January, and we haven't heard anything yet. And I don't wanna start dogging them about, when are you gonna get a determination, that sort of thing, because that didn't work well for us on Yankee Lake. When I started bugging them about Yankee Lake, and I think they just maybe got, um, tired of being, uh, you know, questioned about us, and they said, okay, you don't have it. And I don't want that to be the case here. So, but we, we held out as long as we could without awarding this contract because of that.
What's a, what's the na- bad worst-case scenario if we don't get the bid?
Uh, well, it's, well, then we're, we're, we just pay the entire thing from Metro District, uh, Metro District here, and we use, um, we got that R I F fund too, that we will, uh, also use to help pay for it.
So you're hoping for a half million to cover it, and then two fifty out of us?
Yeah, yeah, but if we don't, we still have the fund available to pay for this.
Okay, keep our fingers crossed on that.
Yeah.
Okay, adopt the resolution authorizing expenditure for responding or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Funds, Kinsman Township Green Space. And we are giving them a one-time grant of one hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And this will be for the installation, uh, of new sidewalks and the township green space. And this is only gonna enhance, um, Main Street, enhance, uh, the community there, which is, has really come a long way the last couple of years on their own without assistance from us. So I'm happy to do this for Kinsman. And again, I will see if we can have a trustee here tomorrow to receive the check. Um, to approve or deny the bridge name change of two Weathersfield Township bridges. That we rename the Disabled Veterans Bridge in honor of the members of disabilities that faithfully serve our country, and Weathersfield Township First Responders and Veterans Bridge.
Remember that public hearing tomorrow morning at ten.
Okay. So we accepted the recommendation before from Weathersfield, now we're officially in a-
We'll have the public hearing at ten.
And then at the meeting, we'll approve it.
Yeah. Twenty, authorize Denny Moly, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute the mutual aid agreement between Mahoney County Board of Commissioners, Mahoney County Juvenile Justice Court, Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, and Trumbull County Family Court. ORC fifty-five oh two twenty-nine authorizes the parties enter a mutual aid agreement for the purpose of responding to and recovering from a disaster emergency, which requires additional resources.
Did you have any questions on that, Commissioner Moly?
Yeah, just, uh, give that to us, and I'm not telling you.
Rich Owen here.
Yeah, Rich Owen, I'm, uh, detention director. Um, basically, it's just a, an agreement in case of a disaster or, uh, act of God-type thing where we would have to send our residents to Mahoney County, they would take our residents there, or vice versa. If something would happen in Mahoney County, we would house their residents, in case of an evacuation, uh, you know, natural disaster, whatever.
We've done this in the past too, you know?
We had an agreement with them years ago, but it wasn't a formal agreement like this.
Okay.
Yeah, it was more just a signed off from them and a sign off from us, but we had the prosecutor's office type this up.
But again, this is for, what really accentuates certain, certain, it's gonna happen, and there's a catastrophe or something like that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Correct, where our building is not feasible for our, to house our kids.
And this is a vice versa thing too, if they have-
Absolutely, it's reciprocating with them too.
Okay, number twenty-one.
Yes, thank you.
Execute letter of support for Mr. Rick Stockburger, President and CEO of Bright Energy Innovators
Yeah, thanks.
For a proposal to the Appalachian Regional Commission for owning a bright warrant. Um, this, we got the presentation on this, uh, earlier from the young lady, and of course, we can support this. I'm surprised she said that there's three hundred people in there sometimes, hundred or three hundred people.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
I need to get over there myself and say, I know they're doing an awful lot, but I was, I was surprised that it'll accommodate that many, or they have that much going on all the time.
Oh, it's, yes, it's enormous space, I know that, I just didn't know they had that many people in there.
Uh, execute letter of support for Ms. Barb, uh, this is supposed to be Barb, not Bird, the typo.
Yeah.
I already picked a one.
Ewing, Chief Executive Officer, Youngstown Business Incubator,
Okay, now, you guys can be a little cruel, we can just go back.
In Trumbull County, Ohio. And authorize Denny Moly, President of Board of Commissioners, execute said letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
It's a tough crowd.
Very tough.
So this, uh, again, um, we got the presentation from Sarah, and, uh-
Just, just out of curiosity too, have we, I know Bright had a ARPA request that we agreed to move on, but it hasn't went to legal yet, correct? It's in the yes category, which, um, is here, but I know that they had an ask of us too, and I don't, I know that we approved it, I know it hasn't gone to legal yet though. They did have an ask of us, unless they're retracting that ask now to put it-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Cause I thought it was for improvement, and maybe they got wind of capital improvements and, and that sort of thing are not covered, um, through our other previous legal opinions, and maybe they just went a different route, because I don't see them on here. Youth Commissioners, or? But you were, you do remember their ask, actually, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But I think maybe that they, I, I'm assuming, maybe they know that, that it was for capital improvements, and they're going to a different route, as, as they know it wouldn't be approved, or?
Rick, Rick, you're not on the line, are you? It's star six if you are.
Rick Stockburger, are you on the line? Maybe that's what they did, maybe they went a different route and- Unless I'm just not seeing it. Cause I know their initial ask was for, uh, renovations, but I don't know if they-
Yeah, I don't see it on here anymore, so.
I don't see it either, maybe, maybe they're going this route.
We'll look into that for tomorrow, I can call Rick when we're done here.
Okay. I know that we approved it at our initial meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that concludes all the business. There are a couple of things, uh, uh, Friday, Don Fair Commissioner, we have our joint meeting with the Mahoney County Commissioners.
Yes.
It's gonna be Mr. Cavelli's office, and that's our annual, uh, meeting put together by the Port Authority. It's at noon.
Yes.
So please keep your schedule clear for that, to attend that.
Will do.
Um, I had a talk yesterday with the Mahoney County Commissioner, Gary Rigetti, um, a- after meeting with, I also met with a gentleman from J A C, a man who does Packard Music Hall and Cavelli Center, and, uh, they're actually front page of Business Journal today. And they're looking at some things a little bit more in Trumbull County. And, and we talked about the regional approach whenever they do a concert, whether it's the amphitheater downtown, whether it's at Packard, whether it's at the Cavelli Center, and the effects of that, when they have like their Y, their Youngstown Live and Y Live, and their bigger concerts. You know, there's, you know, five to ten thousand people downtown at those events.
Mm-hmm.
And many, many of those people come from out of town, stay at our area hotels, and they stay everywhere. Um, with the Build a Better Belmont program, the hotels we have there, the restaurants we have there, it's kind of a regional thing. When they do something downtown Youngstown, we benefit in Liberty Township and, and even all the way over to, to, uh, Weathersfield and, uh, the hotels we have right around the casino on our side of the line, and even in the mall. And even a wrestling tournament, they have a wrestling tournament there every year at the Cavelli, and they sell out every hotel in Trumbull County because they need so many beds, and they don't have enough even in Mahoney County to cover that. So, uh, we had talked about, what can we do regionally a little more? And I, I explored the possibility of creating some form of pipeline for our tourism bureau, to have a better communication for Convention and Visitors Bureau, where it isn't a conflict of us fighting for them to come to Trumbull, them fighting for them to stay on the Mahoney side, breaking that barrier down, so when a regional thing happens, we all benefit, and we all work together to promote it nationally, statewide, and regionally, and we're all rolling the same direction. So there's, that's to not create confrontation.
Mm-hmm.
Their executive director over there is just retired, they're, they're in the process of putting a new one in. So we're met, little bit of resistance where, um, Commissioner Rigetti really didn't feel that there was any competition. They had enough to sustain everyone in Mahoney, they didn't need Trumbull. We're gonna continue talks with that, and that's something that'll be ongoing. I know, um, their Convention and Visitors Bureau board members have talked to some of our board members, and we hope to keep this dialogue going, and as we meet with the Commissioners Friday, that's one of the things too, with this whole bit, the Valley Vision Twenty Fifty, is a more valley regional approach, cause when people come from out of the area, they don't know Trumbull County, they don't know Mahoney, they know Youngstown Warren regional area. It's, they have some Warren Regional Airport, they have some Warren Regional Chamber of Commerce, they know Youngstown Warren, but they don't care where the line is, they don't care if Liberty's in Trumbull or Mahoney, they don't care, uh, their, which side of the bridge they're on, if they're staying in Austintown or staying in, in, uh, Weathersfield Township at a hotel. They just know they need a bed for the night that's safe, so they can attend the event that they're attending here. So I, I look for us as the Board of Commissioners to work more closely with Mahoney, to come up with something here where Beth is one of the best tools we have in the toolbox, and I think she could be an asset to the whole region, not just Trumbull County. We're fortunate we have her on our side of the line, but if she can work better with Mahoney, or there can be a way somehow, um, for us to, to work, uh, together or work somehow, um, you know, I don't want Commissioners to think we're trying to hijack them in any way over there, we're trying to force them into merging or anything like that. But I think we need to have some discussions on what work is duplicated, and what could save money. And what could save money for the region and promote the resources we have best. And, uh, you know, in the, in the city limits of Youngstown, I realize there's only one hotel in the whole city limits of Youngstown, Doubletree Downtown. So people that come to Youngstown need beds, they're gonna stay either in township in Mahoney, or township in, or city in, in Trumbull anyway, or across the border in P A, and of course, we'd like them on our side of the line.
Sure.
And at least in the valley somewhere, and uses our restaurants, and not eating somewhere else on the way home outside of our region, and shopping or whatever. So that's something just to clue you in on, that I initiated that dialogue, and wanna continue with that.
I, I think it's a, a great idea too, uh, uh, that's been sort of volleyed about, um, time to time, but, well, they, they had, if there is sort of a merger or a regionalized tourism bureau, um, and both counties can, can use their resources to- then both counties can, can use their resources to dump into that.
They can have their autonomy still, they can have their control. I know Commissioners over there, their Convention and Visitors Bureau is a department under them and they control the department head, they hire it, not the board, they don't have a board structure like we do. They have a board.
But they fund it the same way.
They fund it, no, not exactly the same. That goes into their general budget and then they fund their Tourism Bureau where we, our, our bed tax exclusively funds ours. Over there, the Commissioners have full say on the funding and full say on the staff and employees. It's run by the Commissioners. It's a CBV. They use bed tax funding, but the bed tax funding comes into the Commissioners and then they redispers it out.
So they don't have a board that does it, yeah.
Correct, they have a board that makes decisions, but the funding is still at the leisure and, and, and they are making, they make money actually in accounting off their CBV for the general fund.
Okay.
It's a different structure and that's something where we need to learn more about their structure and, uh, their board setup versus our board setup, but they are different. They are different and the Commissioners there have the control. Where they, they hire the director, where over here, the board, independent board hires the director. They have full say where their director, there's the department head.
Yeah.
So, they don't wanna lose that power, they don't wanna lose that, I understand from what, what Ms. Rigetti said is, you know, that's their employee, they don't wanna, they don't, they want control. And, and they, they have a right to do in their own county, but we, I'm just looking at what's best for the region.
I just think of, you know, like you said, the Regional Chamber, Port Authority, all these different regions and that's where government is heading and that's where you can, you know, spend the most resources. If you were to join forces and, and all of a sudden here, you're, you're, you know, advertising for the region, um, you can reach a whole lot more people, you can dump a whole lot more resources, resources in it and, I, I mean, it is what it is.
And they have, there's parts of the country, Dallas, Fort Worth, Minneapolis, St. Paul.
Sure.
You know, there's many, many regions that do that.
Yeah.
And even in the Dayton area, there's, there's three or four in Ohio where it's more of a regional approach and not separated by county lines.
Sure.
Or county limits. Where the, you know, Akron Canton, you know, we see that, that's Stark County and Summit County, but it's Akron Canton Regional Airport and they, they manage with a lot of their, their Convention and Visitors Bureau of, as long as they get them in, in that region.
Right.
They, well, they work together on it.
Right.
So, um, I just think it'd be better in the long run, as we attract new business, as we try, as we grow here, everything we got going on in Lordstown, everything we have going on with the Kimberly-Clark project, um, we're gonna need a lot of hotel beds, we're gonna need something for their families to do, we're gonna need to promote for outside workers to come and wanna live here and that's a big thing is recruitment.
Yeah.
To have enough employees for the jobs that are coming. That's a big concern with the Chamber of Commerce, we learned in Valley Vision 2050, is how are we gonna fill all these jobs? We already can't fill nine-one-one and corrections officers positions on the county level with good benefits and good pay. How are some of these other businesses gonna find a good workforce unless we get people, one, to stay here when they graduate and two, to get people to move back or recruit people to this region? With that, that's where CBVs and tourism bureaus help assist and they pave the way and they paint the picture of why it's good to be in this region, why it's good to live and work and, and wanna be here. So, that's just a piece of the puzzle for down the road we need to be aware of. Third thing I had is, uh, hydrola issue. Uh, after the meeting we had last week, we appropriated the funding. We had hit pretty hard by a lot of the sportsman's groups worried that we're gonna kill off all the plant life in Mosquito Lake and worried that it's government stepping in hurting a resource. And I just wanna reassure that y-you and I both attended the meetings, we're looking at this thing from a pristine protect and preserve Mosquito Lake as it is, a sportsman's lake and there is no plan at all to remove all the weeds in the lake. The only, the only thing this is, is the hydrola project to prevent an invasive species from taking over the native grasses that are there to make this lake healthy and learn from the other lakes that had this problem, trust the biologists and the scientists that say you need to get rid of it. I understand. In infant stages of hydrola, it's good habitat for baby bass and baby fish that, that uses cover to stay away from the bigger fish so they can take root and grow and stuff. The bigger picture of it is when a mature hydrola bed or gets mature, it blocks out all the light, stops photosynthesis for other plants and then you lose your native grasses, your eel grasses, your milfoil, your coon tail and the good stuff that we need to have in a healthy environment. So, we may be enjoying the boom right now, but as this thing grows and takes over, we're gonna have a problem down the road and then that's why removing the hydrola now, without remove, without affecting the fish, without affecting the other native grasses, you know, doing it in, in the treatment system as proposed and monitoring it to make sure we're not negatively affecting the fishery in any way, working with the sportsman's groups, working with the bass groups and, and Dubass and the other groups that are out there, the hundred tournaments that are on the lake. Um, I've heard everything this week from, we're gonna have C-130s fly over and spray pesticides or chemicals on the lake and kill everything, which isn't true, to, we just approved funding to get rid of uh, all the vegetation, the lily pads and around the causeway, not true, it isn't, isn't that at all, to, um, a lot of the weed buds people are familiar with out there, they think are hydrolas that aren't, that we're gonna get rid of them, not true at all either. So, it's like a barber shop with sportsman's clubs, sometimes one guy hears something and then he tells a buddy and tells a buddy and tells a buddy, next thing you know, you know, um, we are raping and pillaging Mosquito Lake and, as government officials. And I just wanna reassure that it's not the case and as Ray knows, he can interview us about hydrola and there's gonna be this much printed in the paper, that's just the nature of the business. We could talk to him for an hour and a half on hydrola one-on-one and the science of it and the boring stuff's gonna go in one ear, out the other and, uh, the catchphrase stuff that's in there is gonna be what's printed. So, just wanna reassure the sportsmen, we hear you, we're with you on this, we are gonna engage you in the process. They're more than welcome to be a part of the process and when they do the treatments to be on board with everything, we're not hiding anything, they're public meetings, there's meetings every Monday, they're welcome to listen and attend. And, uh, this is something that we learned from other lakes that warned us, nip in the bud or you're gonna have a massive expensive problem down the road which could negatively affect the health long-term of your lake or your resource. So, just wanted to get that off my chest with that because, yeah. I am a sportsman, I do some, you know, I fish the lake myself, I fish these tournaments.
Oh, yeah.
I get it, I understand, you know, weed cover is great. And weeds is what made Mosquito Lake one of the best bass fishing lakes in the state. It's not hydrola that did it, there's, there's only eighty-two acres of it and there was only forty or whatever last year. It's the native grasses that we have there and the grasslands we do have that, that have make it so blessed to have the resource that we have. We don't wanna hurt that. You have anything Commissioner?
I'm good. Uh, I have a, I, there was an, there was an article in the newspaper, I'm glad that the Tribune picked up on it, I'm not sure if it was you Ray or not, I didn't see, but, um, I didn't actually read the article, somebody told me about it when they walked in, but, um, the, the injection well on, uh, fumes coming out of the injection well. ODNR was out there yesterday, according to someone I talked to.
This is the email we got about diesel smell, someone was smelling at the end of the road?
Su- Southington, uh, northwest side of Warren area.
Okay.
Um, Warren Township, um, that, that injection well, uh, there were some, people were talking about, you know, noxious, um, gases that they smelled and, uh, talking about worrying about their water wells and a lot of different things and, uh, I talked to the Health Department, uh, as, as we all know, ODNR regulates all the, the state regulates all the injection wells and, and the locals don't have any authority to do anything on that. Um, we tried, we tried like hell, uh, in the past to, to, uh, give that, give that, uh, autonomy to our Health Department to try to regulate, um, regulate those wells and, and regulate the area around those wells and, and, um, the Health Department wrote letters, we wrote letters, we had a moratorium, um, but, but to no avail. So, uh, I am gonna go out there today around two-thirty, I've talked to Ms. Emma Floyd from the NAACP who contacted me. Um, and, and, uh, I'd, I'd at least like to see it for myself. Now, they were out there yesterday, ODNR, after she contacted me, uh, she said that they were out there and they were working on it, so hopefully whatever, whatever happened is, is at least dissipated, but I'd like to go out there myself to, to see and, um, it's just a shame that people have to live with that fear and, and, and not knowing or understanding or having that information readily available to them when they contact the local authorities to know that, you know, hey, what's going on here, I smell this and I know it's coming from that point and to be able to do basically nothing about it. And the local officials have their hands tied behind their back for it. We gotta, we, you know, th- these are things that they're relying on us to sort of sound the alarm with ODNR and if that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do, but, uh, just to let you know, I'm gonna go out there and look at it around two-thirty, so.
Okay.
Um, just see if I can smell anything and what, what we're dealing with and if we need to contact ODNR, we'll do that, but. Little update on that and I, the Tribune did a nice write-up on it, which was good and brought some attention to it.
Very good.
Is that you?
Uh, one, uh, uh, last thing, I reached out to Barry Brown, the Fair Board President. We had talked in past conversations about, um, a lot of the other neighboring fairs bring entertainment, they have concerts, they, they, they try to use their facilities more to your own capacity. Um, so I, I had talks yesterday again, um, with the people from JAC. They took over the fair, their entertainment at the fair in Canfield. Canfield went from losing money twenty years in a row on their concerts to, since they've been involved, they've made money in the last four or five years and made a lot of money, um, by restructuring how they do entertainment at the Canfield Fair and how it's run, the management and how you buy the tickets and everything, they were able to shave costs and get it efficient where they can bring in big name acts now, you know, massive name acts, you know, Blake Shelton's of the world and Bradley Gilbert's and people like that that they're doing. Um, they have a proposal that we're gonna, I, I'm gonna talk to the Fair Board about. Um, there's a possibility even as early as this year of bringing in like a Craig Morgan or Clint Black, somebody that's a country singer that's known, that's, uh, anywhere in the eighteen to fifty thousand dollar range where it's pretty much a lock to make money if they were interested in something like that. And with that, we need to see the capabilities of our grandstand capabilities, it's been a while since we had bigger concerts there. But, you know, there are the possibilities of things like this where we've got the amp, we got all these different entertainment venues, but that mid-level something that holds the number of people we have at the fair is a very doable thing. They started doing that at the Wayne County Fair in Worcester a few years ago, they brought in Tracy Lawrence and some other big name acts the last couple of years. With that, they used that money that they made, they invested, they built an event center that I was at this past weekend that's massive, holds a couple thousand people, it's one of the bigger event centers I've ever seen on a fairgrounds. And they were just in the paper over there that they built this thing for one-point-eight million dollars and they, they had a fifteen-year note on it, uh, to pay it off and they paid it off in five years. And they just made their last payment to the bank to pay this off. And they did it because they said when they built it, they had so much interest of trade shows coming there, toy shows, gun shows, uh, woodworking shows, you know, people that would, that would, that would rent the facility for bigger events and then they used it as their sale bond also at their fair. And like you said, they were able to pay it off in five years, which is miraculous when they planned on it being fifteen years. They got a lot of community sponsors that came forth with money at the beginning, they sold the naming rights to, um, Schmucker, uh, in, in Worcester over there and Schmucker Corporation. So, they were able to just reinvest this money into that and now it's a full-time, twenty-four-seven building where they can segregate and different things, they have everything there from cheerleading competitions to, um, like you said, sport shows and, and trade shows. So, my ultimate goal, I would love to see an event center of that, such stature here in Trumbull where we can use that twenty-four-seven. I mean, even, even when we had, um, the Eclipse, you know, fairgrounds wasn't open for people to go out there and, you know, park and whatever, now of course the grass and everything, we just invested a lot of money in that, we don't wanna tear it up, but, um, we're, we're building every day, we're making that fairgrounds better and better and more user-friendly. And of course, infrastructure's gonna be a big part of it, water and sewer to handle people, um, so that's something we need to look at. We're working on the telephone poles, they're now on, the electrical upgrades we've done, we got the new four-H building coming in, we got the ADA compliant bathrooms. So as we move forward, just something I wanna keep in mind that as a personal goal of mine to help them get to that point where they are a pre-standing sustainable business where we can have a big act during the fair and we can attract more people to our fair and then better quality entertainment and build on the successes they've had in the past. And it's been proven in Canfield, they built the one building, of course Canfield's the biggest fair in the state, but they built the one big event center, now they're building another one. And they just put a whole, um, bathroom on the front half and a whole foyer, um, and they're, they're expanding and expanding and expanding where they're getting massive things, they're wrestling tournaments and, and everything else. We've got a couple of bigger venues in the county, but for like cheerleading competitions, like I said, woodworking shows, things like that, to have just a big smet, open space where people can drive cars and trucks and trailers and stuff inside, uh, and have that type of thing, we really don't have that capability of any venue we have in Trumbull County. We have to look at some of the ones outside the county to do that. So, I know it's really expensive, but I think it's a doable goal and I hope the Fair Board embraces some of the idea and some of the farming community and some of the people that support agriculture look at and say, hey, this is doable. If Wayne County can do it, we can do it. You know, Wayne County's half Amish, you know, and, and the second largest Amish population in the state. Um, but they've got farmers and they've got businessmen too, just like we have. Um, I think it'd be a good thing to see that facility humming and bustling year-round. People, in those areas, they walk the track, they go out there running, they go out there jogging, they run their dogs, they ride their horses, they, I mean, just a, an open to the public, this is your fairgrounds, come and utilize it type of thing and, and I, I'd like to see us head somewhat in that direction and I'll report back if how we're set for the Fair Board is when it comes, like you said, we can, Craig Morgan right now just released a new album with Luke Combs and Jelly Roll and a bunch of people where they redid Craig Morgan songs and he's up and coming again, having a rebirth of popularity and we can get him somewhat on the cheap, I believe and could be something that can, could add, you know, a couple thousand people to our ticket sales at the fair. Head project. Bill Hart.
Commissioners, Bill Hart, Trumbull County Mayor. Um, I hope you could follow my bouncing ball, but, um, I re-invented the grant for the Solid Waste Management. They gave me a fifteen thousand dollar grant, up to fifteen thousand dollar grant with a ninety percent reimbursement. So I reached out to a hall at a sin to put lighting on in our back parking lot, adding two more cameras, bull cameras, so Jen from, uh, Solid Waste could view people illegally dumped in the backpack there and a C-type fence to help keep the debris that blows around inside and, and the, uh, containment of the dumpsters. So, I have a total cost of like sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. Minus the fifteen thousand dollar grant money would be a seventeen oh four out of pocket. And then once you take the ninety percent off the fifteen thousand, it'd be a total cost of two thou, or three thousand, two hundred and four dollars and four cents out of county pocket to make all that happen in the back.
That sounds pretty reasonable to me, I'd, I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah. That's with the ninety percent reimbursement.
Gary, do you have an appointment you have to get to?
Yeah, we have the free bid for state road legalization at one-thirty.
Okay, can you hang just for a couple of minutes?
There's a few things I gotta take, okay.
Okay. Can you talk to you about something?
I have also the, uh, three quotes for the pole lighting replacements over at the fairgrounds, so I'm hoping to put that on the agenda for next week with the auditor's, uh, uh, fund numbers.
Okay, and we, we did find out that is our responsibility for that as far as the lease goes or where we was at.
You guys have a letter on that, I sent, I think, uh, I can't remember the date of that letter, but, uh, yeah, it, it, just to make this a short version, this is Bill Danto from the Prosecutor's Office. Just the, the short version of this is that when an agricultural society holds, uh, even an annual fair at their fair, at the fairgrounds that are owned by the county, they, it, it does in a way become under their control and direction. With that being said, the Commissioners, the statute still says that the Commissioners can expend funds to improve the grounds at buildings. Um, there's some statutory requirements even that you do insure the buildings, as we know, we had some, I think, damage to some of the buildings that were covered by corsa over the years out there. Uh, so, even though the grounds in a way are controlled by the agricultural society, it doesn't prevent the Board of Commissioners from still improving and taking those actions out there at the fairgrounds. Obviously, I think that the, the nice thing would be the way you guys are working with the Fair Board on this. So things that, you know, aren't necessarily a surprise to them, that they understand that you guys are working together toward those goals.
I forgot one more thing Commissioners, um, I forgot about the bathrooms of the veterans, I need to get that fund number off of Auditory Yoder as well to get that on the agenda, get those bathroom projects started for, um, the Veterans Office.
Okay.
I completely forgot about that one, my fault.
Nothing else? Make a motion, Commissioner?
Oh, sorry. I have one thing. Uh, Tim, Tim Haffer, Trump County I T. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, we had during the Commissioners' meeting, we had kind of a sideshow going on up front. With one Commissioner deciding to put her laptop up on the screens. She had requested that. I had fielded some, uh, questions on exactly why that had happened. She, she requested that at the very beginning of the meeting. Um, we granted that because she is an elected official. If the Board would see fit to deny that viewing of showing off, uh, all of her unread emails, I, you know, would fully support that as well, but it would have to be coming through.
Yeah, I don't see the reason for it because she can see it on her laptop. There wasn't any reason in the world for any of us to see it.
Yeah. She, she.
I mean, like you said, that's all I saw. It was unread emails.
I thought she was gonna do. I thought she was just gonna.
I think, I thought we were gonna see something. She wants something for the place.
She, she requested to put that up on the screen, so that's her choice. If, uh, if, if, if as a board you would decide not to allow that.
She has the laptop. She can look at all the emails assembly.
Of course.
Everybody in the county can.
Right. And I did offer. She needs help printing them. She needs help understanding them. She'll organize them. I offered, I offered assistance as another Commissioner and not, you know, because I don't feel it's anyone else's duty to do her work, but it's Commissioner work to do that, and if she needs help with it. I would gladly assist, uh, if she requested it. Uh, if she wants it from anybody, I want it to be from myself or you, Commissioner, not.
Sure.
Not, uh, a staff member that has other things to do that.
Sure.
Um, isn't, isn't part of their job details, their description.
But again, she's getting all the emails, just for clarity and transparency. She's getting all the same emails.
Well, we did see that. That's one thing we did see on the board, is she's getting the emails.
She, she is.
You just have to open them.
Right.
But there was a dot next to it, shows a lot of them were unopened until we're in the middle of the meeting, which that's not the time or place to do that, and we're not gonna go through that again.
I have one more, Commissioner, Bill Hart, Trump County Maintenance. Uh, Doctor, um, the Medico sent you videos of what was happening at the morgue. I did have a quote for engineering done for that. I sent it to Auditor Yoder. I don't know what the Board wants to do. It's forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars for the cost of engineering. Um.
We need to move on, especially after what, what we realized.
Well, we need to move on, but that is at the hospital, then I don't know if we wanna reinvest any money, thirty grand in the facility there.
No, not there. I mean, in our morgue, in the morgue.
In our morgue, our own morgue.
Okay.
That's our morgue.
Okay.
To, to construct and engineer our facility at the Health Department, to make it the new corner office.
Gotcha. But the problem you showed us is where they are now.
But it's all, it's all the more reason as to why we should invest in our own morgue here.
Yes.
And save the money. He, I think he quoted what he would save the county in rent, per se, and if it goes up, then.
Eventually it'll pay for itself.
It'll pay for itself.
I missed the beginning when you said the.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thought you were wanting to fix it there.
No, no, heck no. I'm not going to the hospital. Trust me, I got enough to do.
All right. Lot, make a motion, Commissioner?
Second it.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Yes. Bill, did you have something to offer?
Well, if you wanna make the call request, I'm sorry. No, no, your phone call.
Oh, yes, yes, that's what.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all.
I'm gonna see Gary and, and the Commissioner first, and I'll be right there.
Okay.